News Talk 610 AM and 102.1 FM. KBNU.
KBNU news time is 403. I'm Bill Walter with this news update. First, there was the cargo ship crash and the Baltimore Bridge collapse, then DEI posts surfaced, leading to backlash. Representative Phil Lyman, candidate for Utah governor, in his first interview since posts seeming to link the collapse to diversity, equity, and inclusion at the Maryland Port Commission, said the timing of the posts on the Lyman campaign's X account was wrong. Said a staffer sent them without his knowledge and he would not have done it. But Lyman also said the posts will stay. In one instance, the unnamed staffer retweeted a post from the Young Conservative Federation, saying a port commissioner who is black knows nothing about ports, but she is a diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging DIEB auditor and consultant. Another post, again on the Lyman campaign account, said simply DEI equals DIE or die. Still, Lyman, who said he's received threatening messages, claimed the posts are not racist and he's not distancing himself from them. Tom De Sorrent, executive director of Utah Democrats, called the Lyman campaign posts pretty blatant dog whistles and said they should have no space in public discourse. Governor Spencer Cox declined on Thursday to comment on the Lyman campaign posts. KBNU news time is 404. KBNU weather for tonight, cloudy with showers, especially late tonight after midnight, low in the mid 30s and then showers, 90% chance tomorrow, around 50. Showers likely Saturday night and then showers with maybe a thunderstorm also possible in the afternoon on Sunday, high temperature Sunday in the mid 40s. Nice temperatures this afternoon. Right now, we have 53 degrees at KBNU. You know, the snow is so heavy this winter, those nasty voles had a field day in many local lawns. Make sure to call Logan Extermination to get those pesky critters under control. Call 435-752-8450.
In today's game, the momentum will shift when one team goes on a run. Hmm, a run like the diaper run you made last night? If you're thinking of getting a vasectomy, the healthcare teams at Franklin County Medical Center in Preston are ready. A vasectomy is a highly effective form of contraception. It's a simple procedure with a short recovery time, and a vasectomy means less stress for family planning. Talk to the experts at Franklin County Medical Center in Preston about your vasectomy. Start by visiting FCMC.org today.
KBNU news time is 406. A Brighton, Utah man has been charged with aggravated assault and making a threat of violence after a confrontation that was captured on a since-deleted TikTok that went viral. 67-year-old Keith Robert Stebbings was charged Tuesday in Third District Court felony, uh, Third District Court, in a felony aggravated assault and misdemeanor threat of violence charge. Charges stem from an incident on February 24th when a snowboarder was recording himself when he accidentally crossed onto Stebbings' property. Stebbings was captured on video confronting snowboarder Lauren Richardson with a shotgun and threatening to shoot him if he trespassed again. According to a probable cause statement, Richardson told police he was snowboarding at Brighton when he mistakenly, uh, Brighton Resort, that is, when he mistakenly crossed a property line. Stebbings then posted the shotgun directly at Richardson and pushed him several times with the weapon in hand. Officers were unable to locate any private property signage in the area of the resort from which Richardson entered Stebbings' property. During the altercation, Stebbings told Richardson that if he did it again, there would be holes in him, police reported. Richardson apologized to Stebbings several times, unaware that he had crossed onto private property. And a man was safely arrested following a large police presence at an apartment complex in Salt Lake City where he had barricaded himself inside. The incident occurred shortly after 7:30 PM on Thursday. According to Brent Weisberg, a spokesperson for Salt Lake City Police Department, the incident began when a call was received about a domestic disturbance at the apartment complex. Social workers and police responded to the scene. Weisberg said the suspect barricaded himself inside after committing a domestic violence offense and was the only person in the apartment unit. The victim was able to exit safely and was unharmed. The suspect and victim are reported to have had a prior relationship. The suspect allegedly made threats of violence prompting the response of the SWAT team and crisis negotiators as a precautionary measure. Evacuations were carried out only for apartments adjacent to the suspect's location, with other residents being advised to shelter in place. Around 10:30 last evening, officers were able to get to the man to surrender. Without further incident, no injuries were reported. KBNU news time is 408. For more details on these and other stories, visit cashvalleydaily.com.
Breaking news stimulating talk. News Talk KBNU, 610 AM and 102.1 FM.
You may not be ready for spring cleanup, but your trees are. Hi, this is Chelsea with Whole Tree Care. Call now because we are starting to get real busy. Let our guys come trim your trees and shrubs, and I can assure you, when the weather warms up and your trees leaf out, you'll love the way they look. Also, if any of your trees suffered winter damage from heavy snow or wind, let us come clean it up. Call 760-6587. Call now while visibility is perfect. Whole Tree Care, H-U-L-L Tree Care, 760-6587.
Don't let concerns about today's events derail your long-term financial strategy. Edward Jones Financial Advisors can help work with you to understand today's financial landscape and how to be positioned for the long term. Edward Jones can give you the tools for a reasoned, disciplined approach to investing. Get started by calling one of the seven Edward Jones locations in Cache Valley. Edward Jones, member SIPC.
The Advocates care about your cycling accident and have attorneys who are fellow riders. They understand the risks you face when you ride and they want to see you get back on your bike and out on the road. If you were hit while enjoying a leisurely ride or training for the next big cycling race, the Advocates injury attorneys can help. We are available 24/7 and we don't get paid unless we win your case. Chat anytime at utahadvocates.com or call 801-355-5550 today. Cyclists deserve an advocate.
Wouldn't it be nice to lose a minimum of two to five inches of fat, just like that? At Bell Medical, with our uniquely patented FDA cleared procedures, we are able to permanently remove that stubborn hormonal fat that almost seems impossible to get rid of, and we are able to do it in a way that is so precise. We can guarantee a minimum of two to five inches of fat loss after one visit with us. Schedule your free consultation at our bountiful clinic at bellmedical.com and let us make your dreams a reality.
On the next Handle on the Law.
A judge may say it's reasonable. That's why.
Why would it be reasonable?
Because a judge may say that's reasonable. Hey, do I look like the bank, uh, the bank machine maven here? How many of those you think I fix?
I met you before and you, you look brilliant.
Oh, well, I thank you for that, and that wasn't real smart on your part.
It's Handle on the Law Saturdays from 1 to 4 on News Talk KBNU, 610 AM and 102.1 FM.
For the People.
We are waiting with bated breath for news from the Cache Republican Party, meeting an executive committee tonight.
With Jason Williams.
And I'm really excited about this next segment. We have two guests here in studio. Uh, we're going to talk about something that we've talked about many times here on the show, but from a bit of a different angle.
Weekday afternoons from 4 till 6 on News Talk KBNU, 610 AM and 102 FM.
Welcome to KBNU's For the People. Friday, March 29th. By the time you hear from Bill and I again, March will be over. It seems weird, but it's how calendars work as I understand it. It's beautiful outside today. I hope everyone's finding a way to enjoy it.
It was supposed to be rainy today, but it kind of held off.
I saw partly cloudy and it has been that. But as you can see, the, the snow, the temperatures haven't warmed enough to even melt all of the snow off of those mountain faces here in the valley, and that's actually good news. So it's nice out there today. It very much feels like spring, even though we're a few days into spring, it hasn't felt that way this week. So it's really pleasant, but not so pleasant that we're losing our snowpack too fast. So, so far, everything is kind of just played out perfectly, uh, temperature-wise, uh, snowpack-wise, precipitation-wise. So fingers crossed that doesn't change and in Utah it can, you know, we could find ourselves in a drought situation by June and hope that isn't the case, but looks good right now. Uh, snowpack around the state despite, you know, a smaller amount of precipitation and the warmer temperatures, uh, most areas still sitting between 120 and 130%. Some down from 140% when we checked in on this last Friday, but still not a single spot in the state below 100%. And that's definitely good news. It's, uh, raising some concerns about flooding. A lot of people have asked if cities are doing anything this year like they had in previous years as far as prepping for flooding, sandbagging and all of that. So far, there hasn't been a, a need to announce anything or to set up any kind of sandbag fill stations or things like that. Cities here in the valley, several cities have put out just kind of general reminders to listeners, you know, remember in the spring in Utah, it can flood. And if you've lived where you live for long enough, you know where the problem areas are. So because of the potential, any spring for flooding, uh, if you can take steps now, probably going to be better off. But, uh, right now, there are no official warnings or, or even watches anywhere in the state for a flood or even flash flood warnings. So, uh, it, like I say, it's not a pressing thing, not something you need to cancel your plans and take care of this weekend. It might be something that you want to take some steps. I know some folks who live on flood-prone stretches of streets here in Logan, Nibley, Millville and Hiram have already put sandbags out in some of those broken gutters or areas where a nearby river or stream can flood and, and end up in somebody's yard and then basement. Uh, but those are folks who do that every year. So other than that, again, no official announcement from cities. This, if, if the situation does change, uh, one listener wanting to know if Logan City is planning to do the same thing, just in case. Uh, if the situation changes, I would guess that would be the situation with Logan City, where they've had down at the service center, you know, a location where you can go in and, uh, you have to bring your own shovel, but you can fill the sandbags, take them back to your, to your place and do the necessary sandbagging. Um, that is not running right now. So, uh, but if the situation changes, I'm sure they'll have that up and running very quickly. I know they've got the sand, they always do, but, uh, I also checked in with the county to see if they're concerned about flooding in some of the county areas or in their coordination with cities. And, uh, I was told that Cache County has taken some steps that they take every spring. There are certain areas where even in a, you know, a mild, uh, snowmelt cycle, uh, it can sometimes, flooding can be an issue. And so they have taken some of those steps already, but they do that every spring. So nothing out of the ordinary happening so far in, in the county at large as well. Uh, but the county is prepared. They did say if the situation changes, they have everything they need to, uh, ramp up, uh, flood mitigation efforts immediately. Uh, in fact, uh, they said overnight, they could have everything running, um, and ready to go for residents and the work the county would do should the flooding start. So, uh, everybody's set and, and just waiting to see what happens, but to answer the specific questions we've gotten from listeners, there are no official announcements of flood warnings or watches or even problem areas here in Cache Valley or throughout the state right now. Um, that's not usually the case. Uh, this time of year, flash flood warnings are pretty common in southern Utah, but the precipitation has been spread out. We are expecting some more over the weekend. Couple of ski resorts still operating too. And with weather like this, uh, you can see that clock is ticking pretty, uh, short on the number of days they'll have left, but, uh, very different than previous years. I remember last year it was so tragic that, uh, due to staffing issues, despite the fact that we were still getting feet of snow in the mountains into April last year, a lot of the ski resorts had to shut down because they had hired seasonal staff for a certain amount of time and they, they make their best guess every year on the length of their season. They, they didn't plan on it being five weeks longer than it usually is here in Utah. And so a lot of them had to close their doors, even though there was plenty of decent, uh, snow to ski on. Uh, this year, they've taken steps to be more flexible should they be in the same situation. Obviously, we're probably not going to see resorts, uh, open. Well, I don't know. I would be surprised if we see resorts open much into April. Um, I don't think this will be the last weekend that a couple of those resorts in the Cottonwood Canyon area are still open and others. Uh, I don't think it'll be the last weekend, but, uh, I doubt you get more than one weekend into April before they're saying it's, uh, the, the end of the season. But yeah, you can still put your skis on and get out there if you want to. 753-5868 if you'd like to join us. Jeff Hote, member of the Tremonton City Council, joining us later on in the show. The For the People movie show coming up at 5 o'clock. Jeff is joining us to talk about a series of public hearings that he and other council members have organized. This was something Jeff ran on last year in the municipal races. Last summer, I had an opportunity to go over and moderate a candidate's meet and greet event and, and town hall style panel, and I got to know a little bit about the politics and, and the issues facing residents in, in Tremonton City. Most of it, you know, tied to growth, just like here in Cache Valley, although it's happening much more quickly in Tremonton and, uh, it hadn't been an issue for so long. It's, it's coming as a bit of a shock. Jeff ran on a message of, you know, there aren't problems we can't solve, but the communication between residents and the city has led to some breakdown and to residents even opposing things that maybe they wouldn't have opposed had they, had the city communicated better about them. So Jeff said, if I'm elected, I'm going to host these regular, at least quarterly, uh, public hearing events where we just pick a place, invite residents to come in and ask us questions and talk to us about things. Uh, Jeff has one of those planned for next Wednesday, but we'll also get a recap of how the first one went earlier this year. So Jeff Hote, Tremonton City Council member, joining us after the bottom of the hour news break. We'll be back with more of For the People right after this.
This is Dr. Redd, chiropractic physician with Red River Health and Wellness. Are you suffering with fatigue, brain fog, headaches, intestinal issues, weight gain, and you haven't been able to find any answers?
Before I started at Red River, I was having a lot of stomach pain. I was overweight, severe anxiety, some depression. I had been to multiple doctors. I'd been to specialists. We had done tests and no one could find anything that was wrong.
Red River Health and Wellness can help you.
I'm on anxiety medicine. Um, I've lowered my dose and I'm working with, um, my doctor to continue to lower it. I'm sleeping through the night. I have energy for my kids. I've lost 30 pounds. I just feel really good.
Our goal is to teach you and educate you so you know how to manage your condition a lot more effectively and you know what to do and what not to do for the rest of your life.
Schedule your appointment today at 855-55RIVER. Red River Health and Wellness with offices in Logan, South Jordan, Springfield and St. George.
Call Red River today.
Spring is here and new deals are blooming at Murdoch Hyundai.
Pick your new car at our spring sales event.
Everything feels new in spring, so pick a Murdoch Hyundai and drive renewed.
Receive 0% for three years on the Tucson or lease a new Elantra for only $199.
And every new Hyundai comes with America's best warranty, a 10-year, 100,000-mile powertrain limited warranty and owner's assurance.
When you walk through our doors, you feel like family.
At Murdoch Hyundai in Logan, Linden and Murray or online at murdochhyundai.com.
Call 866-628-3065 to see dealer for complete details.
Welcome back to KBNU's For the People. I'm not particularly fussy about things. I, uh, my, my vehicle during a busy work week will get, uh, a little full sometimes. Doesn't bother me. Um, it does if it goes on more than a few days, but I have this problem. This time of year, it's, it's tough where, you know, a lot of mornings, you leave with a jacket or a sweatshirt or even a coat some days, and then by noon, you don't need it anymore. By the time I come here to the station, when I'm, I'm kind of wrapping up my, my day job workday, I, I strip down to a t-shirt and then a lot of times if I have to do some work after the radio show, I'm getting home and I just kind of forget all that's in there. And then it'll happen a couple of days in a row and then I, I look back behind the seat and think, wow, it looks like I live here. So I'll clean things out. So I'm not, you know, I'm, I'm not a particular person, but I, uh, I looked at my phone screen today. I was showing someone something and we were in the sun and, uh, they couldn't read it. And I looked at my phone screen and thought, that is absolutely filthy. So I wiped it off, didn't do a good job, it looks like, but.
That's why, yeah, cell phones, uh, tablets are some of the most germ loaded things that we put our fingers on.
That's where I was going with this. We've all been in this situation where someone says, ha, ha, look at this, and they, and they go to hand you their phone. Um, don't.
Don't touch it.
Don't take it. Make them hold it up, whatever, uh, wipe it off, or if you do grab it, uh, you know.
Go wash your hands.
Wash or sanitize your hands before you touch your eyes or your face. Um, and no one's ever been able to quantify this because, you know, we also have, uh, you know, difficulty where it comes to like the common cold, it's often impossible to trace it to an immediate, uh, source when it happens to us directly, when you know you've got a cold. You can guess, you can think, ah, I probably got it here, probably got it there, but, uh, you're never really sure sometimes. Um, there has been an attempt to kind of quantify this. MIT did this. Uh, they, and, and the way they did this is they basically asked students to just come by randomly, uh, three or four times a day. They'd set up this little, uh, bin area and they asked them to come by and they would, uh, run their phones for about an hour, three times a day over a week on campus. They'd run their phones, uh, under a microscope and, uh, they found, ah, they found hepatitis A. They found hep- they found everything. Uh, not Ebola. They didn't find Ebola.
Got to break there.
Yeah, they found COVID, they found flu virus, they found cold virus, they found, uh, body fluids, uh, more than you'd care to have me list here.
Yeah, please.
Uh, they found feces and not all of it human on phones. Uh, they found, I mean, it, the list goes on and on, but, uh, the, the, so everybody knows, you know, you don't eat, uh, a salad with chicken in it that's been sitting in the sun for four hours. There's a little bit of a risk there, but everything you could get from eating, uh, a piece of chicken that had sat in the fun, the sun, or a spoonful of mayo that you left on your dashboard in your car all day at a 70-degree day, every type of food poisoning you could get from, from food that sat out too long or food that was well past its best by date, they found on phones. Just bringing them in, running them under a microscope, they have this computerized system where they would just, the phones would sit face down on a conveyor belt, then they'd flip them over face up and run them back through the opposite way. And this machine, this is actually kind of cool, a little tangent on this. Uh, it, it's a microscope, but it actually takes pictures. So it didn't require someone sitting there with their eye up, up to the microscope lens, flipping the phone around and trying to document everything it was. Uh, they actually, this computer, uh, the software that they have, will actually snap a photo, analyze the photo and present a list of everything it recognized. And it's imperfect, so they know it's not recognizing anything, uh, but, um, uh, it is some, the, the list here just blew me away. Um, it, I can't, I, I won't read all this, honestly. Uh, it will disgust you. The, the one that really caught me, Bill, was the feces and not all of it human. There was, there were some other feces.
Human or non-human is, yeah, it's, you don't want it on your cell phone.
Yeah, that's, um, so they found MRSA, E. coli, strep. Uh, they found a wide variety of, of bacteria that you don't want in your eyes, nose or mouth, uh, or on food that you might eat. And, uh, so their, their final analysis, they said, the, uh, the CDC has, has put out messaging on this before and, and in their messaging, they say, based on what they've documented, phones, as you said, Bill, tablets, uh, even keyboards of computers, depending on the location, uh, can be 10 times dirtier than a toilet seat than, than actually putting your hand or your face on a toilet seat. Because think about that, if you are a, I don't often anymore, but you know, when someone calls and you have to use your phone like a phone, you know, we're all shocked when that happens, right? Oh, I forgot it did this.
Why is this thing ringing?
What am I supposed to do? Uh, but, uh, what they found is that, that, uh, well, the risk, not what they found, based on what they found, the risk is that your phone rings and then you, you put it to the side of your face.
Yeah.
You know, it's, if, if you're just handling it or handling someone else's phone, you can wash your hands, you can sanitize, but, uh, then your phone rings and you put it to the side of your face and whatever's on that phone is now on the side of your face, crawling towards your mouth or your eye or something like that. Um, so yeah, uh, they also had some tips on how this happened and, and they said that, you know, it's just like with your hands. Obviously you don't want to run your phone and, well, some of them can handle it actually, but it's still probably not the best way to do it. Run your phone under hot water and soap, but, uh, and, and you also want to be careful with certain chemicals, um, you know, especially cleaning chemicals. They'll, they'll buff up a screen and it'll never unbuff. Uh, so, uh, be careful with that. Don't be spraying, you know, kitchen disinfectant type stuff on your phone and wiping it off. But simple hand sanitizer, as long as it doesn't have, it won't hurt your phone if the hand sanitizer has, uh, like an aloe or a vitamin E moisturizer in it, but it can make your phone greasy and, and create even more smudges. So just straight up, uh, hand sanitizer, uh, gel or just a straight liquid, a spray, if it's just isopropyl alcohol. Uh, and then of course, isopropyl alcohol, doesn't even have to be in a fancy hand sanitizer bottle, uh, wipe your phone down and they recommend you do this at least once a day. They also recommend that maybe you, uh, don't scroll on your phone in a public restroom or even at home. Uh, they warn that, well, basically everything they found, uh, including, you know, uh, E. coli and, and other things we associate with, with food poisoning, they also found, uh, Uh, this is a difficult to rid yourself of skin infection.
Is it, is it like a staph? It's a staph, staph infection?
And it can take years to get rid of and it is gross looking, but they found that on students' phones in this MIT study. Uh, yeah, pathogens, uh, left and right.
I think I'll make this call using the speaker app or the speaker function.
Well, and, and they also found that a lot of what they found on the phone, a lot of these pathogens they found on phone are antibiotic resistant, meaning they can't be treated with conventional drugs. Uh, that's why, you know, the skin infection they found and some of the gut and respiratory infection causing stuff they found, they were kind of concerned about that. Um, and they don't really know, they don't think the phone causes this, but they think the fact that it stayed alive on a phone long enough to be documented, um, is, is concerning. So, uh, clean your phone, alcohol-based wipes or sprays are safe to use. Uh, that will, if you have like a silicone, uh, case on your phone, an alcohol spray or wipe will dry that out eventually and you'll have to replace it, but they're what, 10 bucks? Um, 20 maybe? Um, so you want to be careful of that, but is every other phone case, every other phone type, you can use an alcohol spray or, or wipe and sanitize it. And again, uh, avoid, this is just my personal recommendation, not MIT's. Avoid, uh, hand sanitizers that have like a moisturizer in it, like vitamin E or, or aloe, because it'll make your phone screen.
Greasy.
Greasy and then, and then after that, the smudges are, you can't even see it yourself.
And there's more bacteria and stuff.
Yeah, so, uh, and then they also recommend sanitizing your phone chargers, uh, because you've been plugging your phone into it and, uh, again, this is gross, but some of this stuff crawls. So, uh, do not accept that phone when it's handed to you unless you wipe it down first or wash your hands immediately after touching it and, uh, clean your own phone. Um, because MIT said, uh, the CDC's 10 times dirtier than a toilet seat is an understatement based on what they found. So, skin infections. We'll be back with more of For the People after the news with KBNU's Bill Walter.
Thank you, Jason. KBNU news time is 4:32. A fourth person has been charged in connection with an ambush that allowed a white supremacist Idaho prison gang member to escape as he was being discharged from a Boise hospital. 27-year-old Tia J. Garcia of Twin Falls owned the car that inmate Skylar Mead and his accomplice, Nicholas. and his accomplice Nicholas Umphenauer fled in after Umphenauer shot and wounded two corrections officers early in the morning of March 20th, prosecutors said Thursday. She falsely reported the car stolen less than an hour after the ambush, Kelly said. And text messages from the day before showed that Umphenauer had instructed her to do so. The Ada County Public Defender's Office, which is representing Mead, Umphenauer and Garcia, uh, declined to comment. The Biden administration has restored rules to protect imperiled plants and animals that had been rolled back under former President Donald Trump. Among the changes announced Thursday, the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service will reinstate a decades-old regulation that mandates blanket protections for species newly classified as threatened. The blanket protections regulation was dropped in 2019 as part of a suite of changes to the application of the species law under Trump. Those changes came as extinctions accelerate globally due to habitat loss and other pressures. Energy companies, ranchers, farmers, and many Republicans have long viewed the 1973 law as an impediment to development. And a group of Republican-led states is suing the Biden administration to block a new student loan repayment plan that provides a faster path to cancellation and lower monthly payments for millions of borrowers. In a federal lawsuit filed Thursday, Kansas Republican Attorney General argues that Biden overstepped his authority in creating the SAVE Plan, which was made available to borrowers last year and has already canceled loans for 150,000. Biden announced the plan in 2022 alongside a separate plan to count, cancel up to $20,000 in debt for more than 40 million Americans. The Supreme Court rejected his plan for mass cancellation. The challenge was filed electronically in federal court in Kansas by Kansas Attorney General Chris Kobach, who requested that any trial be in Wichita, the state's largest city. The lawsuit asks a judge to halt the plan immediately. Along with Kansas, the suit is backed by Utah, Idaho, Alabama, Alaska, Iowa, Louisiana, Montana, Nebraska, South Carolina, and Texas. KBNU News Time is 4:35.
Furniture and mattress stores come and go, but there's a reason. Family-owned and operated, U and I Furniture has been here for 95 years. Bring in your tax return. U and I has closeout prices on select mattress models, including some displays. On a budget and looking for a less expensive entry-level mattress, they have it. Want something more supportive to support more weight? U and I has that. Sleep cooler and sleep better on a copper memory foam mattress. U and I sells sheets from bedgear, a cooler sheet to breathe. That's why there's always a better buy at U and I Furniture downtown Logan.
ABC News, I'm Chuck Severson. Something big, a big construction crane described as one of the largest in the eastern seaboard has arrived at the collapsed highway bridge in Baltimore. Mentioning the big job, Maryland Governor Wes Moore.
This is a remarkably complex operation and our focus needs to be on unity of command and unity of effort.
An initial goal, says the governor, is reopening the ship channel and port to commerce. There has to be more good, lower inflation evidence before the nation's central bank cuts interest rates, says Fed Chairman Jerome Powell. A Commerce Department report today noted prices dropped the past month. More concern about Pope Francis's health, he skipped the traditional Good Friday procession at Rome's Colosseum, says the Vatican. The pursuit of a stolen car through Hollywood by police came to an abrupt end yesterday as the car, an electric Tesla, ran out of juice in the middle of the road. The driver arrested. This is ABC News. KBNU weather for tonight, cloudy and showers, especially later on tonight, the mid, uh, after midnight, low temperature in the mid 30s. And then, uh, good chance of showers tomorrow, high around 50, showers likely Saturday night and on Sunday as well, with, uh, some thunderstorms possible in the afternoon on Sunday. High temperature in the mid 40s. We've been in the 50s today, pretty nice day. It's, uh, in fact been to 54. Right now we have 51 degrees at KBNU. Roof Rescue is dedicated to keeping your home safe and dry from minor repairs to complete roof replacement, celebrating 10 years of providing watertight peace of mind. See roofrescueusa.com or call 435-999-4268. Uh, Wall Street closed today, stock markets closed for the Good Friday holiday, but we do have this business update now brought to you by Edward Jones.
From ABC News, Wall Street now. Markets were closed for the Good Friday holiday. When they reopen on Monday, investors will likely react to Federal Reserve Chair Jerome Powell telling a San Francisco conference that the board wants to cut interest rates, but won't be ready until it sees more good inflation readings. Another inflation measure the Fed closely tracks slipped last month, meaning prices are still easing. The Commerce Department says prices rose 0.3% from January to February, slowing down from a 0.4% increase the month before. The National Highway Traffic Safety Administration is investigating complaints that more than 540,000 Ford pickup trucks can abruptly downshift, increasing the risk of a crash. EPA has set strict emission standards for heavy-duty trucks, buses, and other large vehicles. Texas Attorney General Ken Paxton is investigating a key Boeing supplier that's already under scrutiny by federal regulators over the quality of its work. Chuck Severson, ABC News.
Hi, John Wees here. At Heritage Auto, we know how much you value reliability and quality in your car. And there's no better option than a new Ram vehicle. This month, we're celebrating Ram Truck Month with hometown deals on our Ram truck lineup. Come in today for invoice pricing on all new 2024 Ram models and get below invoice pricing on all 2023 models. See why this award-winning lineup of Ram trucks is the toughest and most capable ever. Visit your friends at Heritage Ram, your hometown dealer at the biggest deals.
Do you know a champion in our community? Nominate them for the KBNU Above and Beyond Salute. Every Friday morning at 8:30, we'll spotlight a firefighter, law enforcement officer, healthcare worker, or other deserving individual, and give them a $40 gift card to Firehouse Subs. Submit your nominations for the Above and Beyond Salute by visiting kvnutalk.com. Help us recognize the champions in our communities. The Above and Beyond Salute, sponsored by Firehouse Subs. On News Talk, KBNU, the voice of northern Utah.
Welcome back to KBNU's For the People. Last summer, I was, uh, actually flattered to be invited to moderate a, a candidate town hall in Tremonton. And, uh, despite the fact that I love Tremonton, spent a lot of time over there, I didn't know much about, uh, some of the issues facing the city and, and some of the concerns of residents and, uh, of course, the candidates who are running. And, uh, it was very interesting to see how, uh, things compare to, you know, here in Cache Valley, but also to learn, uh, how much, uh, growth Tremonton and the whole area there in Bucks Hildre County has seen and will be seeing and, and some of the concerns that was raising understandably among residents. So, uh, during the municipal races, uh, one of the candidates, a successful candidate, uh, was elected to the Tremonton City Council and, uh, he's with us here today. Jeff Holt ran on a promise to engage better with the public. In fact, Jeff, I remember during that candidate event, you said you felt that Tremonton wasn't really facing insurmountable problems, but some of the reason that they were getting so much pushback and, and hesitation from residents and scorn at times from residents is that the city hadn't been great at communicating with residents. And you said that would be one of the primary things you changed if elected. Well, you were elected and you made good on that. Uh, you've been hosting, uh, semi-regular, uh, I think quarterly, correct me if I'm wrong, uh, public hearings for people to just come in, sit down with the city council, right? Three, wow.
Yes, this is, this will be my third.
And so the next one's coming up next Wednesday, correct?
That's correct. Wednesday evening at 6:30 here in Tremont.
Okay. And, uh, this has been, uh, I assume received positively by the public. I mean, we're, we're literally talking about an event where you say, hey, come down, there's no agenda, no script, uh, we'll be there, elected officials. And you can talk to us about things and ask us questions, right?
Um, that's the way that it is run. So I'm the host of the meetings, um, to date, so it's not an official city public meeting.
Sure.
Um, I'm doing it to gather information for myself. I have had one or two other elected officials show up at the prior meetings and a couple of city staff, which is fine. Um, but it's not an official meeting. So I'm doing these just to gather input on topics that seem relatively hot at the time.
And, and what are you hearing from residents? I, I know, you know, I remember during the discussion, uh, just like here in, in Cache Valley, uh, growth kind of encapsulates everything, right? But, uh, have you, have you heard anything that, that just, uh, uh, made you realize, oh, you know, we hadn't discussed that or thought of that?
There are more than one, uh, topic that, uh, comes up and, and is an issue. At the last meeting I held in early March, um, the theme of the meeting was, what are three great things about Tremonton? What are three things that need fixed? And then I asked the audience, um, to prioritize those. So they got sticky dots and they got to go up to the, uh, board and, and mark the ones that they thought were the most important. And.
Oh, wow.
On the things that were great, uh, the number one thing was great people that live here. They care and they're family-oriented was, uh, definitely number one with the group that was there. And, uh, that we're a farming community was number two. Um, was something that the public enjoys here and that there is a small-town feel that goes along with that. Um, closely in fourth and fifth, um, was that it's a great place to raise kids and some of the park facilities we have here are really appreciated by the public.
That is.
Conversely.
Oh, sir, go ahead.
Conversely, the, uh, three top items that need fixed and nailed tied, as a matter of fact.
Really?
At the top was, uh, in no special order, since they all tied, was, uh, we need some more and better restaurants, maybe even some perhaps that would offer, um, beer. Um, we need better entertainment. That's a part of that first one. The second one was a lack of government communications and transparency, which you had mentioned a little bit ago. And then there's some controversy here about what to do with our Midland Square, which is in the heart of downtown and, and what's the future of that? And the public, the majority felt that it should be pretty much as left as it is. And we have a war memorial there and, and that's what they wanted to see the emphasis on.
That, it, it's interesting, the idea of, of allowing people to just come in and, you know, free-form discuss things. Uh, how has it helped you? So, so you take this information, again, you're doing this personally, basically. And, uh, so you take this information and then you go to the official meetings. Um, has it helped you, uh, has it changed your mind on any, uh, you know, votes that you've been a part of or any issues that you've, uh, at hand in, in prioritizing?
Um, yes, and the idea isn't for me to push my thoughts or opinions on these topics. It really is to gather the public's and to represent the majority that I can hear from. Um, and so like in the first meeting that I held, it was about population growth. And, and unexpectedly to me, there was a fair amount of support for, for some pretty fairly significant growth in the town. Um, I gave a lot of data, done a lot of research on it. And so was just giving them a lot of data on it, but, uh, then just gathering their input. I won't say it was consensus or everybody agreeing, but the majority definitely lead toward some growth. It's, it is just fine. Along with that though, this meeting, at our last council meeting, there was a proposal to start looking at another annexation. So at this meeting, it'll be focused specifically on annexations, which includes population growth, but it includes much more beyond that. So now that the city might potentially grow land-wise, well, that's going to be more infrastructure that's required with that and lead potentially to more taxes. So is the public okay with that? Are they okay with what, how we're handling the growth and the things that we're looking at? And so that, that will be a key. The growth might lead to potentially more industry and businesses and jobs, which some people are definitely in favor of here. Um, but how do they feel about the infrastructure and taxes to go along with that as well as the culture?
Sure. That, again, this speaks to some of the challenges that, you know, aren't unique to Tremonton, but, uh, every city, there's a variation on this, the speed at which it's happening, some of the proposals, uh, that, that are promising to bring a lot of jobs in. Of course, that means a lot of people, that means a lot of need for housing. And, uh, some of these issues as far as the character of the city, the, the downtown central square interests me, Jeff, because this was, um, there was a proposal to, to do something, you know, vastly different with this, using, as, if I remember right, RDA funds and other. And, and you say, when you spoke with residents, they said, we, we like that, that war memorial, we like that, and it has a bit of a park around it. Um, do you get the sense that people in Tremonton, seeing all this change, uh, happening already and also realizing more is coming, do you get the sense that they're feeling a, a little need to kind of hang on to some, some things that won't change?
Well, that's one of the things that I tried to encourage at my last meeting is, don't just focus on things that you need fixed. I mean, we identified them, but don't think that's just where the emphasis should go. You talked about the three greatest things of our community. You have to work to retain those.
Sure.
Don't think that they just stay here, um, and that there are no changes if you don't do anything. You've, you've got to really work to, to maintain those great things as well.
Sure. And, and it's, well said, Jeff, you know, change has a tendency to kind of happen on its own. Uh, and so you have, this is why, you know, cities, large cities like Salt Lake, um, will have these five, 10-year master plans of, you know, okay, here's where we're headed. And then they allow the public to come in and, and sort of vote on that. And, and that was an issue I remember coming up during some of the candidate debates last year that residents felt the city hadn't really capitalized on that. Um, are you getting a sense that, you know, as, as you've moved through, uh, you know, several months in office now and, and got a lot of feedback from the public at these, these public events, uh, that you're now hosting, uh, on a regular basis? Do you have a sense of what five, 10 years in Tremonton, uh, could and should look like?
Um, could look like, I'm not sure about should really.
That's kind of an unfair question, right?
Yeah, that'll leave to the public. But case in point, you know, the U.S. Census numbers are the numbers that the government here in Utah focuses on as the official numbers. Well, the 2023 census numbers for the U.S. Census, because they do projections, won't come out until probably like June. Um, so you're always working with a delayed period. So I'm curious to see what the growth was between 2022 and 2023. The year before that, we had a massive growth, over 12% population growth in, in one year, which was almost tied with the top number, like within a tenth of a percent of, of the top number in the state of Utah, and yet the rest of our county grew less than 1%. Um, so it was really focused here in Tremonton. If we were to stay on that course, oh my laws, um, it, it could be huge. But in addition to the eight or nine hundred new housing units that have been built here in the last two to three years, the city's already approved another 1,900-plus homes to be built and apartments, multifamily, et cetera. But over 1,900, which in our town, that, that's like a 50% growth. Um, and depending on what interest rates do in the economy, we could, we could see a, a 50% growth in population in the next handful of years.
Wow.
If all that follows through.
That is, I honestly, the, the, uh, the idea of, of that much growth. When I learned that last, last summer, 12% growth, um, and we all, you know, so from the Cache Valley perspective, we all have a tendency to think of Tremonton, Garland, a lot of Bucks Hildre County. It's sort of this sleepy, kind of out of the way, you're, you're, you're south of the I-15 interchange that we all take dead to Salt Lake. And, and, but, but this is one of the fastest-growing areas in the state. Uh, it's an area that, from the state legislature to the Bucks Hildre County leadership, everyone's talking about bringing new stuff in, bringing new jobs in, bringing, and, and all of that's going to come with, with people and, uh, and, and, you know, more demand for housing, more stress on infrastructure and roads. So it, I, it's so great that you're engaging the public on this on a regular basis. And again, for, for listeners, uh, Jeff Holt, uh, city council member for Tremonton City is hosting the next, uh, public meeting next Wednesday. And by public meeting, again, as Jeff said, this isn't an official city meeting. He's hosting these personally, anyone in Tremonton is invited and is kind of a, a free-form event. It's, there's, it's not scripted, there isn't an agenda. Uh, it is a chance for residents of Tremonton to speak with the council member about their concerns, ask their questions and create, uh, something Jeff ran on last year in those elections, a direct communication channel between residents in the city, something Jeff felt was lacking and had led to some unnecessary problems in, in Tremonton. And, uh, Jeff, this is next Wednesday night, and I know you said it, but I forgot already the time and location next Wednesday?
It's, um, set to go as long as two hours. I really don't want it to go longer than that for people's sake, but it will begin at 6:30 PM and it'll be at the Bear River Valley Senior Center, which is located at 510 West 1,000 North here in Tremont.
Very nice. Jeff Holt, Tremonton City Council Member, really appreciate your time today. Appreciate that you're doing this as well, uh, because it, it is really a rare thing. I wish every city had something like this going on on a. every city had something like this going on on a regular basis. And can't wait to check back in with you again and see what you're hearing from residents there in Tremonton.
Great. I'll look forward to talking to you again.
Thanks very much for your time. Our pleasure. Again,
Thank you, Jason.
Thank you. Our guest there again, Jeff Hote, city council member in Tremonton City, one of the fastest growing areas in the state, just mind blowing. 12% doesn't sound like a lot, but you think about that for a city like Tremonton, 12% growth in a short period of time presents a lot of challenges. And understandably, residents are feeling, maybe we're changing too fast. Maybe we need to make a list of things we want to hang on to and, and keep as a part of our character of the city. It's an important conversation. So if you're listening now from Bucks Elder County, you live in Tremonton, be at this event next Wednesday, 6:30 there at the senior center in Tremonton. And again, it is a town hall style event, no agenda, no script, a chance for you to ask questions and communicate with the city leader. And also, if you've never met him, get to know Jeff, a very intelligent and fun to talk to guy. So be there. Thanks again to Jeff Hote. Thanks to our listeners. We'll be back right after this.
Ah, hear that? That's the announcement that spring has arrived. It's not just spring, but great deals are worth singing about, too. Lucky for you, it's the Spring Spectacular Sale at Discount Tire and Automotive, and those noteworthy deals are everywhere store wide. Like when you buy a set of four select BF Goodrich tires, you can save up to $169. Choose Discount Tire for the lowest tire prices anywhere. Plus, get the best financing options around. Choose 12 months no interest, no credit check financing, or layaway. Whatever your budget, Discount Tire and Automotive has the will and the way. Hurry, these special savings end April 30. You won't find a better deal online or at any other store. Make your tire and service reservations online 24/7 at webtires.net. It's the Spring Spectacular Sale at Discount Tire, 885 North Main and Logan, 110 South Highway 165 in Providence, and 728 South Main in Smithville.
According to Malcolm Gladwell, it takes over 10,000 hours to become an expert at anything. This is Jay with Darrell's Appliance. You don't need to spend any of your valuable time figuring out appliances when you partner with us. We are Cache Valley's local appliance experts. Darrell, my dad, started this business in 1970, founded with his passion of connecting with people. We train our amazing team to carry on his passion for people and appliances. It's part of the Darrell's difference. Call for your appliance repair today. Darrell's Appliance, West on Airport Road.
Welcome back to KVN News For the People. Thanks again to Jeff Hote for joining us. Again, we think of Tremonton, Bucks Elder County, and it is in a lot of ways still kind of the sleepy community, south of the I-15 exchange where we all get on to head, or excuse me, north of the I-15 exchange, where we all get on to head south to Salt Lake. And it, it seems like this sleepy area, mostly still, you know, farming and agriculture. All of that's still true, but 12
Things are happening.
12% growth in a year. Oh, that is, this was, I wouldn't call the municipal races last year contentious, but what you could tell, just in the, in the two events I was involved with as a moderator and a, and a host at one time here on the show, you could tell that there was anxiety from residents, from city leaders, and very different visions of what should happen going forward. Not that I felt anyone's particular take was bad. I didn't know. I don't live there. I haven't, I don't know the history of things. I liked everything I heard, every proposal from the candidates, but they were so vastly different. And to me, that says this is a city that is grappling right now with, with who it is as a city, and also who it wants to be going forward, recognizing this growth is coming and some of it already here. And that's very similar to what we're dealing with in Cache Valley, although I would say in Tremonton, it's a bigger shock to the system. Because in Cache Valley, we've had decades to see, to have this growth slowly build up to where, you know, you have a major metropolitan community like Logan City at the center of the valley, a university that brings in thousands every year. So we, we were more baby stepped into this. In Tremonton, it's happening like a floodgate has broken. And that will only increase as the inland port location is, is completed. That's going to be, you know, the promise there is somewhere between 300 and 500 jobs. So that's going to bring people in. Public transit going to make its way into Bucks Elder County over the next five years. That's going to bring people in and people, I mean, imagine if you're working in Salt Lake and you can live in Brigham or Tremonton and ride front runner down, work on the train, spend less time at the office. I know a lot of people who work in Salt Lake, see in software development, who are just salivating for that opportunity to actually live that far away from Salt Lake. A lot of their employers let them count the train ride on front runner as work time, as long as they're working, you know, have their laptop open, connected to the internet. And, and that's going to bring a lot of people to an area that hasn't had to deal with that before. So, speaking of Bucks Elder County, check it out at cashvalleydaily.com. Charlie Schill has a recap of what was probably one of the biggest political events last night. It was a candidate meet and greet style event with the U.S. Senate candidates, Trent Staggs, Brad Wilson, John Curtis, Carolyn Fippen, and Brent Hatch, all there. And it got wild. Charlie has quotes and more. We'll see how this all plays out because they're already gnashing teeth with each other, and they haven't even met for the event yet. So, yeah, it kicks off at 6:00 PM, and it is going to be, well, we'll have some audio for you. How about that? I'll promise, on Monday's show. But if you're free, check it out this evening at the USU campus there in Brigham City. And we'll be back with Hour Two and the For the People movie show right after this here on KVNU Logan.
Covering all the news. Stay with 610 AM and 102.1 FM. Breaking news and stimulating talk. KVNU Logan.